Hello, I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 5th, 2023 Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll have invocation given by Commissioner Yoder and pledge of allegiance by myself. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity we have together together. We'd ask you to look after our first responders, look after those people in government, especially our leaders on the state, local, federal level, and on the national level, and our world leaders, to bring peace about this country and this world. We'd ask you to help us as we go through this procedure to make sure that we use the knowledge that we have, and your blessings upon us, as we try to make decisions that are good for this county. Be with each and every one of us as we travel back home tonight. Keep us safe, and we ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Would direct your attention to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First of all, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Yoder back to the board up here. He's been off on an extended stay, vacation, recovering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. It's been a long and rough road the last two months, and I appreciate everybody's prayers, the cards, the flowers, the visits, and it's been a long, like I say, it's been a long two months, and I've still got a couple, two more months to go, and we'll see how things go, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving right along, we've got a public comment, but Madam Clerk, no one, oh, shoot, I'm sorry. I skipped it, sorry, folks. Adoption of agenda.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as in our books.
Second.
All in favor? Ananimos. And then, no one signed up for public comment?
You're next. It's on the budget public hearing, not this one.
Next item is a public hearing, Alexander County, 2023, 2024 proposed budget. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Make a motion to a public hearing as it concerns the Alexander County budget.
Second. All in favor? Few comments before we dive in there on the proposed budget. The development and adoption, the annual budget for Alexander County is a lengthy and involved process. It begins with department heads submitting their budget request back in March. Management then evaluates the request and makes adjustments where necessary. Afterwards comes several working sessions between staff and some of the members of the board to review and establish budgetary priorities for the year, and to make further adjustments until the budget more closely aligns with the priorities and vision of this board. One of the final steps prior to adoption of the budget is the public hearing, which we're in now, which we will hold as we speak. The public hearing is as important a step of the budgeting process as it provides an opportunity for you, the citizens of Alexander County, along with other stakeholders, to voice any thoughts, opinions, concerns with the proposed budget. This feedback allows the members of the board to make informed decisions about how to best allocate the budgetary resources entrusted to them. And just a little specifics, general fund budget request for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 totaled $60,746,018, which would require an appropriation of a little over $4 million in fund balance in order to balance the budget. After making adjustments, and up to today's point, the current proposed budget being considered by adoption later this month totals $56,617,207, which represents a reduction of a little over $4 million. And the amount of the fund balance required to balance the general fund budget at this level is approximately $3,784,979. I'll go on to say, just to kind of give you a breakdown, kind of like a pie chart that Mr., I believe Moose provided for us, 29% of the budget goes to public safety, 25% goes currently in what's proposed, 25% goes to fund the human services departments, 17% general government, 14% goes towards funding education, 9% represents transfers to other funds, 3% funds culture and recreation, and somewhere around 1% for environmental protection, economic, physical development, and debt service payments. So, let me start the meeting. The gentleman that raised his hand that signed up to speak?
We didn't open public hearing.
Oh, we didn't?
Yeah, we did.
If you would, sir, step up here to the podium and announce your first and last name.
Thank you. My name is David Murphy. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you taking, allowing me a few moments to speak this evening. It's been about 25 years since the last time I spoke in front of a county board, so I have a few guardrails to keep me in mind. I'd like my, I'd like to use my time, my few minutes, to talk about community, something I know this county appreciates greatly and holds dear. My wife, son, and I relocated to Taylorsville from Colorado about two years ago. We were looking for a better place to raise our kiddo, a place that valued community and placed a priority on children and their futures. Although we didn't know a soul here when we moved in 2021, we quickly found community within the Alexander County library. The library staff welcomed us with open arms and made my son Jamison feel right at home from our first interactions. They took an interest in him, his ideas, imagination, and learning. They helped me navigate our new landscape so that I could be the best father and parent to my son. They provided a sense of normalcy when anxiety was high. Since our first experience two years ago, we've attended countless library activities, including musical events, outdoor gardening activities, Halloween costume parades, and the weekly Thursday storytime. My son and I have a standing 10:00 a.m. Thursday morning appointment that my boss graciously gives me free. There is no rec center in Alexander County. There is no community center in Alexander County. There is no space for individuals to freely gather, learn, read, or dream. There is the library. So please forgive me when I say I find it deeply troubling that any member of this board would, for a moment, contemplate, let alone propose, cutting library hours, resources, or funding. Anyone who's spent a moment in any of these libraries knows the staff does an amazing job with the incredibly little they have at the moment. If anything, the library needs more resources, more technology, more reach. I find it, in my personal opinion and my approach as a parent, I can make sacrifices or I can allow my child to make sacrifices. Please let us not make the sacrifices, please let us not force our children to make the sacrifices that we can make now in other areas, not the library. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Is anyone else out here that wanted to speak at the podium today for the public hearing? Please.
Mr. Chairman. I just want to go on record today saying that I think we still need to make some strong cuts in this budget, and I think the taxpayers deserve better than we're at today, and at where we're at today, I can't support it.
Anybody got any recommendations on where to start cutting?
The one, one thing that I would say, yeah, for those of you that are here and can see this, this is what we're talking about. Really, you know, and each page is front and back. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not a, coming up with a budget is not a haphazard activity. And as the commission, I think, or at least speaking for myself, excuse me, when you look at all the different departments, all the different, you know, line items, revenues versus expenditures, and, you know, for myself, it's somewhat overwhelming, because I can't personally look at each line item and know if that's enough money or if that's not enough money for, you know, whatever that line item may be, because I don't know everything about the daily operations of every, you know, every department within the county, you know, within the county government. I wish I did. Well, let me rephrase that. It would be good if I did. I really don't want to know all that, because no, you know, no one person should have to have, should have to be there, but I will, I mean, I will make the comment, I would like to see if there are any, if there are any additional reductions and/or cuts that we could, that we could make that are not detrimental to, you know, significantly detrimental to the operations of, you know, of the different departments and processes. I mean, I would love to see some more cuts. You know, I never, I never like when you set a budget where, as of right now, we're looking at, you know, 3.7. If, if all the money spent and the revenues are not greater than what we expect, you know, we're looking at potentially spending $3.7 million of our fund balance or savings account. I know the board, and the board and the previous county manager, Mr. French, worked very hard to build the fund balance to a healthy level over the past six or so, you know, six or seven years. Because when I first came on the board in 2014 with Mr. Reese, or Commissioner Reese, you know, it was thrown in our face that we had to raise the tax rate 13 cents, because we had no fund balance, and basically had been spending, the county had been spending more money than it could take, you know, than it took in. And I remember that, I mean, I remember that night vividly when, when Mr. French presented and said, hey, we're looking at a 13 cent tax increase, because, you know, obviously we don't want, we don't want, we don't want tax, we don't want to tax any citizen any more than we absolutely have to. We all, we're all taxpayers too. We all, you know, we all use the same services that, that the citizens do. You know, we want ambulances to come to our house if there's an emergency. We want fire trucks to come to our house if there's an emergency. You know, we want, the school system to be wonderful. We want DSS to, you know, to help take care of those that can't take care, you know, that need assistance. But, that being said, I guess to round this up, I would, you know, I would like to see between now and when we officially adopt the budget, which we're running out of time. Hopefully, our new county manager will have some insights when he gets here very soon. But if there are any, you know, if there are any, any items that we can trim and still, and cut down on that amount that is set to come, you know, that could potentially come out of fund balance, I would like to see, you know, I would like to see that happen.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know, we just went through this revolve, and they sit taxpayers pretty hard already, and if we don't get this rate down, my phone's just blowed up for the last two weeks, and I just feel like the citizens deserve better. We all got our wants, and then we got our things that's necessary to run this county. And I think we're to the place where we've got to be fruitful with our money and do like we would do if we were at home. And there's things I want, but I know I can't afford, and I think that's where we're at in the county. It's been a long time since, what I can see, that we've made some strong cuts, and I think we need to do our part to show the taxpayers that we're going to do what we need to do to stay in line with their taxpayers' money.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say, not a lot of bills I get excited about, and my tax bill is not one that I usually celebrate when I get it. Just as Commissioner Lael said, and Commissioner Herman, you know, everybody expects somebody to answer that phone when you make a call, and if you're needing help, if you're needing something. And it costs money to send, you know, the sheriff out, fire trucks, ambulance, you know, those are things that are built into the budget, that, you know, things that you got to have. But I will say, you know, I'm not happy with where we're at right now, but I think our county manager's coming in, and I would like to see him, you know, take a look at this budget also, and I think he's already has said that he will, and before we say we're going to use this budget, you know, to make sure that we're where we need to be, Mr. Chairman.
Make sure everyone understands there's no budget being voted on here tonight, but it is an opportunity for anyone in the audience, citizens of the county, to voice their opinions or whatnot, so that's the purpose of this public hearing, so if you are sitting out there and you have an opinion, feel free to walk up to that podium and voice it, because that's the, really the only place that you can, so you should utilize that, that opportunity. When it comes to the budget, I have some personal opinions, and then opinions that collectively throughout the, the community, ever since I've been a commissioner, it's part of it. You know, to balance a budget, you know, we all operate our own budgets in our own households. You can only, you know, operate with the means that you have, the income coming in. If you go past that point, then you're going into a deficit, and you better have some savings or something to make up that deficit, or then you're really in trouble. Fortunately, over the last six, seven years, the Alexander County has done a great job in actually saving and being frugal with their funds and trying to spend wisely, in my opinion, while giving some, some places for our citizens to enjoy and go with their families, and maintain and uplift our fire departments and emergency personnel and different factors and fashions. But there are several things that come from the community all year long, and was it Mr. Murphy that spoke earlier? Mr. Murphy, I think he's gone now, but he alluded to it. We don't have a community center for people to enjoy. We don't have this, we don't have that. So, you know, where's the breaking point? You know, if you, if you drop the tax rate down to here, and you still can't meet a budget that's currently proposed to you, you got to find $4 million almost to shave off that current budget to break to a zero, to balance. But we don't have an emergency room here either. That takes money. Community center takes money, this, that, everything takes money, so, you know, where's the happy median? And we represent all y'all, the citizens of the county, so, you know, I listen all year long, year after year, of what the folks want in this county. Well, it comes to a point of, you get up here in the hot seat, what do you do with If you don't keep tax rate at a certain level, you just cannot provide the services that citizens are demanding. So if we drop it so far, we're going to go through another higher many years, and the county's going to complain and have concerns, and, you know, and they're warranted, they're warranted. I think a county should have certain things for their family and youth to enjoy and, you know, to, to just use and be families, and whether it's, you know, any type of center or whatnot, and what all that center offers, but, you know, it's, it's, where's that happy median? I'm not sure I know that. And I do agree, I'm not happy with the budget, but I don't know where we go from here personally on, on my stance with it. Yeah, I don't like paying taxes at all, just to be honest. I feel like I pay more than my fair share, but that's just Marty Pennell, so, but I also understand that I do like to see, you know, fire engines and law enforcement cars and EMS and everybody else out running around taking care of folks when they need it, and then you've got, you know, big expenditures like from health department to DSS to school system, just, you know, the costs are going to be what the costs are. Now, do, could departments look at themselves within and say, hey, yeah, we need to go in here, and we need to find out, do we need this position, that position, this, that? That's really the only true way, in my opinion, we're ever going to figure out how to get down to a balanced budget, is if we make sure that we are being good stewards of the tax dollar from our citizens or not, is when our department heads and other entities in the county go through their organizations and take a strong look and say, you know what, we don't need this any longer. And I know those decisions are tough, but at some point, something has to give when your budget just keeps escalating, inflation keeps going up, somewhere or another, that has to occur. And the majority, a huge portion, I don't know the percentage, Mr. Lael may actually know, of our landowners, property, real property owners, you know, they're picking up the bill. That's, that's me, I'm in there, I'm in that equation, because we do not have, like, if you'll look at other counties, and you'll look at their pie charts and this and that of income coming in off the real property, and then tax dollars and this and that, we don't have the tax dollars coming in off of these big outfits, car lots, you name it, et cetera, et cetera. So the burden comes to the property owners, the real property owners. And then, you know, every, on the proposed budget, on the proposed, and this doesn't mean this is where it's ending up, is proposed, is 67 cents, so on the current reevaluation, one cent is worth approximately $392,96,000?
Just under $400,000.
It's under $400,000, just barely, but where in our, before, or, or prior to this reevaluation, one cent was worth right under $200,000, I think. Is that correct or not?
It was about $250,000.
$250,000 something.
About $250,000.
So that's why we can even think of the idea of actually lowering the tax rate, but to what point, that I'm unsure of. But I understand all the concerns, because pretty much, you know, a strong portion of the, the public has expressed those ever since the budget and reevaluation was scheduled and ongoing and throughout the process. But, you know, where do you, where do you trim? Where do you cut? What do you do to bring more in line? While offering the services that our folks here want? You know, what do you, what do you do with that? Where do you go? So either we continue not to have services that the folks around here kind of demand, or, like Mr. Murphy said, I wish he was still here, he'd get his name pointed out, but just like he said, you know, do we want our, our kids to have to suffer through that, or do we want to be able, or we, or we suffer as the adults? So it's a fine line. I don't know, like I said, I don't know where that happy median is, and, you know, we, we keep referring to our new county manager coming in. He's not a magic one, by the way. He's not going to be a magic one, so I don't want anyone to think that he's going to fix everything as soon as he gets here, because we're setting him up for failure if that's the case. But we do believe that he will have a, a good and strong mind to help right the ship a little bit, so. And that podium is still open. We're still in the public hearing, in case anybody wants to speak.
Mr. Chairman, one other, one other thing I would say, to allude to one of your comments. Alexander County is rural. We are largely agricultural. You know, by state statute, farmland pays 10% of the, what would typically be billed for their property. And there's a lot of property in Alexander County that is, that are under forestry plans. Exact same scenario, where someone owns a tract of land, you know, a large tract of just undeveloped woods. If their tax value, just using around numbers, is a million dollars, they pay profit tax based on 100,000, 10%. We've had several, you know, I know I've had calls, I've had people come up to me, I'm sure the other commissioners have too. One thing that would significantly help Alexander County and, and the tax rate is growth. And I just got on my calculator on my phone real quick, just doing some, some very simple math, and please don't quote me to the penny, because this is an estimation, but if one new commercial business, retail, restaurant, whatever, opens in Alexander County, there's a new retail business going, you know, that's being built right beside my office, right? They've just started clearing the property. I know roughly what that, what that building is going to cost from talking to people involved. I know what their, their, you know, the average, average store like theirs generates revenue per day, because it's on, you know, Goog, I Googled it. It's amazing what you learn on the internet. I don't believe it all, but when you see it about 18 places from legit- I don't believe it all, but when you see it about 18 places from legitimate, you know, legitimate sources, you know, but like one, one, you know, freestanding business, okay, with, with cost of construction and everything else, and you know, when I say a freestanding business, especially if it's a national, national name kinda place. What I looked at was, it costs $2 million to build it. That's property, building, parking lot, everything, which in today's month, which in today is not, is not outrageous, and I think Ms., I think Chairman Pennell would agree with being in real estate business. And they have just a million dollars a year in sales, which works out to about 3,000 bucks a day. And that's, that's considered six days a week, not counting seven, if they're only open six days a week, Monday through Saturday. The property tax generated, and I'm gonna double check this, we couldn't, but the property tax generated would be about 14,000 dollars a year. The sales tax generated, the percentage that Alexander County gets of the seven cents, which is, we get two cents, would be about 20,000 dollars a year. So, that's 35,000 dollars a year, from one, you know, one little out parcel with a, you know, with a business on it. You know, I've, I've had people say to me, Catawba County cut their rate, and they did, they cut it way down. But when you look at Catawba County, they have new car dealerships, they have, how many Walmarts, Best Buy, Target, Academy, oh wait, and all that stuff is going on down toward Lake Norman. Don't know if you've been to southern Catawba County in the last 10 years, but it's changed a lot. And that's how they can cut their tax rate, is they have so much to tax. And the problem in Alexander County is we don't. And I was meeting with our planner, who's sitting here in the corner, earlier this week, actually, and he made the comment to me that someone had come up to him, and he was talking about the strategic plan, and someone had come up to him and was complaining about the tax rate, but didn't want any kinda growth, didn't want anything to change, wanted to stay exactly like it is. He liked it like it is, we've got everything we need here. Well, I mean, that's, you know, that, that's an ox, I mean, that's an oxymoron, you can't, that doesn't work. And so, you know, and, and I know as a board, we're very pro, you know, controlled growth. I don't expect Alexander County is ever gonna look like Manhattan. I hope not, if it does, I'm moving. You know, but we need, we need growth. We need, you know, we need retail business, we need commer, you know, we need commercial business, we need, we need more housing. I mean, if you think about the tax revenue generated by one large neighborhood, especially with, with home prices, what they are now. You know, and so, as a board, you know, I, I can say, we're, you know, we're looking at things, I mean, we're looking at our zoning, we're looking at our zoning, we're looking at all kinds of things right now, trying to, trying to, you know, make development as affordable as possible, to make, you know, to, to make sure that Alexander County is somewhere that businesses wanna come to, that, that, you know, that, that builders and developers wanna come to. Because we, you know, because, I mean, we all understand, if we can, if we can increase the tax base, we can, you know, the cost is, is shared more, if that makes sense. And part of our problem right now is, we don't have, you know, we just don't have enough, you know, with, as fast as things have gotten more expensive, you know, with inflation, you know, we don't have as much, we don't have as much to, to share the cost, to spread the cost over, because like, you know, like the other board members have said, you know, there are things we have to pay for, and they cost what they cost, and, you know, we can't, there's nothing we can do about that. And a lot of the, a lot of the thing, well, most, most everything in our budget, most of our budget, you know, is the state or, you know, the state of North Carolina requires what we do. And I don't think, you know, I don't think we're gonna do anything that we don't have to, unless it is a true benefit to, you know, the 37,000 plus or minus citizens in the county.
Which is pretty easy to say here and be, you know, today and, and say all we've said, but we, we've gotta make some hard decisions, because with the budget going up four to six million year after year, it's not gonna be but about three years till this board's gonna have to come back to the taxpayers and raise the tax rate. And I can tell you, that's not gonna be a happy day for us, or whoever's sitting here, or the taxpayers. And we're worried about our kids, but we could put them in a hole they can't get out of. And I think we need to look at it very seriously today. And I, that's, I'm not gonna say anything else.
Well, I, I just don't feel like it's all doom and gloom. I think, as most of you know, the cost of business has gone up, and it's gone up for the county. It's gonna cost us to take care of what we already have, it's going to cost us for the plans that we have, to do some things in the county that will make it better. And if you check the prices of things, and I know most of you've gone to the grocery store, I have to be honest with you, I do not go to the grocery store, my wife handles that, but she reminds me each day what it costs her at the grocery store. She told me what ginger cookies cost now, and she got me hooked on ginger cookies a long time ago. I couldn't believe how much they'd gone up. I'm like, well, I still want ginger cookies, okay? And I feel like that's the way it is for all of us in our county. We still want the services, and to get those services, it's just gonna cost us more. With inflation and with the different things that are happening, we're gonna have to pay if we're gonna play, and all of us like to play. I can't, I don't know of anybody that doesn't wanna play. We like for our kids to go to the park, we like for them to go to the Courthouse Park and play in the water, and we cut the water down so that we don't use much water anymore, so we cut a cost there. And once we had the first water bill, we thought, whoa, here. So, we cut the water back, which cut the flow and which cut the cost. And we do things that way. Also, over several years, and I'll go all the way back to the second year I was a county commissioner, and Jennifer Herman back there has heard me say this 400 million times, our fund balance was like 3%. Folks, I want to assure you that these county commissioners and the commissioners in the last five, six, eight, nine, 10 years, has done everything they could to make sure that this county stays in a financial responsibility position. We do that, and we will continue to do that, but I don't want you to think it's all doom and gloom. I mean, there's a bright side to everything, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna participate, we got to, we got to pay for it. And, I mean, I, I'm looking at the tax rate, I've been over the budget, and I've looked at it and looked at it and looked at it. And, you know, I, I, I really feel like that whenever my time comes, I'll say 67 cents. That's what I'll say on the tax rate, because I think that's what it'll take for us to be able to meet the needs that we need for this county, that's where it's at right now. But this county is in good financial shape, and I do not see it getting in bad financial shape. I don't see that happening. I don't think anybody on this board will let that happen. I think we're all in the same situation, and we'll be as very conservative with your money as we can be. And we'll expect our department heads to make sure that they spend the money wisely, and it's only spent for the things that they need. And there will be no excess spending on the part of department heads. We'll make sure of that. And I, I wanna reiterate what Chairman Pennell said, because we are getting a new county manager. He's not a miracle maker. Okay, he's not, he's not gonna come in here and, oh, I got this, guys, I can make this happen and change everything. Not going to happen. And I don't expect that from him, but I do know for a fact, he's a numbers man, and he knows how to look at the books and look at the numbers, and Jennifer Herman is an outstanding numbers person also. So, I, I don't foresee anything happening, and I don't say the doom and gloom, maybe I'm wrong, I don't think so, but I, I, I think that we'll be fine and, with our budget, and I hope by the next time we come around, on the 19th, I think it is, and what we said, the 19th, then you'll know exactly what's going to happen. But I feel about good about what I've looked at, and the people in our finance group that have been meeting for the last several weeks, I think they've done a good job to make sure that they cut where they could cut, and cut the things that needed to be done, and, and saved several dollars there whenever they did the cutting.
I'll say some one more thing, you know? I've got coffee, sorry. No, just, just for informational, informational purposes, we are in, I mean, our county is in good financial shape. And that's because a lot of people have done a good job. The, the bit of information I wanted to share and just make, you know, make, well, obviously, all this information is completely public, there's no, you know, there's nothing that we do, we, we are not allowed to do anything, you know, pertaining to your money, that is not completely public. But what I was gonna mention is, the county's debt service is, I would imagine, the best it's been in a long, long time. Really, the only, the only thing we, the only thing Alexander County owes money on at this point is the law enforcement center. And that has paid off, Ms. Herman, I'm looking back there, 2026, so we have, you know, we only have about two and a half, two and a half more years to pay on the law enforcement center. And that is the only debt payment that we have. A lot of counties, a lot of local governments, you know, and if you look at, you look at the percentage of our budget that is debt service, I mean, it is absolutely minute. I mean, there's, it's just, it's, it's tiny. And I would wa, and, you know, and I would wager that our, our debt service is much healthier than most counties around us. And I just, like I said, I just wanna let you know that, you know, it's not, that we don't run, you know, we don't run up bills on the credit card, which is, you know, one way to say we don't, you know, I think the county's done a very good job in not spending money that we didn't have. While also, you know, departments and department heads and employees have done a good job providing the services that, you know, that we, that we need to provide.
Anyone else have anything to say tonight, in regards to proposed budget? Any commissioner? Everybody good?
Chairman, I'm making motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Moving along to public hearing in regards to rezoning 23-06 Louis Herman Trust. Do I have a motion that we open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to open the public hearing, reference rezoning 23-06 Louis Herman Trust.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Brian Burgess will be taking the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is, as Chairman Pennell said, rezoning request, RZ 2306. We're looking at the wrong images, Chad. Can we skip forward and then go back to the, there we go, perfect, thank you. So, this is on the corner of NC 16 and Old Wilkes-Barre Road, there's a vacant parcel out there, right on that corner. The property is currently zoned RA 20, and the applicant is hoping to rezone that to highway commercial. The planning board heard that case last month and sent forth a favorable recommendation. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I am gonna make this statement. I've handled multiple real estate transactions that actually border around that property over the years, so I will recuse myself from a vote on this. Does any commissioner have any questions, concerns, or statements in regards to this rezoning order? Marty, I better not vote either, I've had that land leased. So, are you recusing yourself, Mr. Chairman? I mean, Commissioner Kent?
Well, I will say there's commercial property pretty much all around that, as you look and see. There's a farm, I think it's Hog Slat, it's on the old Wilkes-Barre Road. There was a former grocery store, I think it's a little drive-through kinda taco restaurant there. And then there was a, a guy had a frame shop business for furniture, I think it's closed down, but the building's still there, so.
That's true.
I would say it meets our qualifications.
Is that not across from Dollar General?
No.
No, it's back this side.
South of Dollar General.
Okay, yeah, 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 that's right, I'm sorry.
Before we get to the school, it's on the right.
Yep, yep. Sorry about that. But there is a highway commercial piece right across, I mean, opposite one.
Yeah, Old Wilkes-Barre Road.
Did you ever know Deal was automotive, or?
That's straight across, for me.
Yeah, that's where the Hog Slat is there.
Anyone out in the audience tonight have any concerns, questions, statements in regards to this public hearing? Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close public hearing for rezoning 23-06 Louis Herman Trust.
Second.
All in favor? When we ask for this vote, remember that Mr. Herman or myself will not be voting, so you will have three commissioners voting. Do I have a motion?
I'm making motion to approve public hearing, rezoning 23-06 Louis Herman Trust.
Second.
Those in favor? So, you now must have a three. Moving along to item number four, public hearing, rezoning 23-07 Billy Loudermilk and others, be delivered by zoning director Brian Burgess. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. All in favor? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this property is, as I told Mr. Loudermilk, this is probably the most complicated, simple rezoning I've ever done. It's a fairly simple request, but the property is divided by both the town and the county. So, we actually just rushed over here from the town council meeting earlier tonight, where they voted to approve this request, as well as planning board last month. What's going on here is there is R3 and R20 zoning that affects these properties, the applicant would like to have the RA 20 zoning to the east extended over to his properties, various properties and the neighbors as well have tacked onto that petition. Generally speaking, this was something that when the COG handled the rezoning for the town, when I, I think the, the two entities merged their zoning ordinance, they, they kinda just made a decision regarding what was there. made a decision regarding what was there, but it didn't necessarily reflect the applicant's wishes, and so that's what we're trying to do tonight, is to extend the agricultural use further on.
Anything from the audience, in regards to this rezoning? Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Same move.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation to approve rezoning case 23-07, will be by Loudermilk and others.
Second.
All in favor? Our next item of business, number five, is reconsider telework policy for DSS supervisors. This is an item that we did vote on last month, just to bring everybody up to speed. Mr. Yoder was phoning in on just a speaker, yeah, conference call, and did not vote the way that he felt he was voting, he was in a misunderstanding, so we have the ability for our policies and rules and regulations to bring this back, because we, I personally feel like any commissioner that happens to, we definitely want their voice to be heard, because they do represent our constituents out here. So, in regards to the telework policy for DSS supervisors, do I have a motion that we approve that request?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to revive consideration of telework policy for DSS supervisors.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? You have three, all opposed? Three, four, two against.
And then he needs to make another motion to approve it.
Okay. His first one was to revive it, and then he needs to approve it. I will make a motion to approve the telework policy for DSS supervisors, allowing them to work remotely one day per week. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Three. All opposed? Two. Motion passed. Item number six, budget ordinance amendments, number 68 through 72, delivered by Board Clerk Jamie Starnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number 68 is to increase the Health Department budget for additional food and lodging funds received from the state. 69 is to increase the DSS budget for American Rescue Plan funds for APS, that's Adult Protective Services, to develop, implement, and evaluate successful or promising interventions to prevent elder abuse, neglect, or exploitation. Number 70 is to increase the library budget for donations received that have not been, not yet been budgeted. Number 71 is to increase the fiscal year 2023 budget estimates for the fines and forfeitures received by the county, which are required to be remitted to the local Board of Education. Number 72 is to increase the general fund and the solid waste fund budgets due to the requirements of Government Accounting Standards Board Statement, number 87, also known as GASP 87, which change the accounting treatment of leases.
Do I have a motion to approve budget ordinances 68, 72?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve budget ordinance 68, 69, 70, 71, and 72, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And thank you, board. Item number seven, board appointments and reappointments, Council on Aging, Historic Preservation Committee, and Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, delivered by clerk Jamie Starnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We need to appoint Jana Brown to the Council on Aging for three years, reappoint Betty Long to the Historic Preservation Committee for three years, and reappoint Krista Hyatt, Zach Shepard, Carrie Gerald, Ronnie Reese, and Eugene Smith to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for two years.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the before-read board appointments.
Second. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda as stated?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given in our pack.
Second. All in favor? We will be adjourning, are going into closed session, only to adjourn, come back in to open to adjourn. Really messed that up, sorry. Closed session, 143-318, 118, five and six, contractual personnel. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn into closed session.
Second. And all in favor? Thank you.